...meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV. There are members of other media in the audience. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please let any committee member know and we will make sure that you get it. Good evening, everybody. What a crowd. So, first agenda item is approval of the minutes. As every member had an opportunity to read the minutes. Motion from Scott, second from Pat, all in favor. Next, we have announcements, correspondence, and distributions.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to announce the Milford music program, our strings and the elementary chorus and a percussion ensemble performed at various Lions Club events and also at the Rotary. And just wanted to acknowledge and thank our music department for their reaching into the community and just the nice accolades that we got from organizers at the Lions and the Rotary and complimenting the students' performance, behavior, and so forth.
Thank you.
So, just wanted to share that this evening.
Thank you. Any other members? Well, that being said, we move into our next invitation to speak. Is anybody here invitation to speak? Okay, and the next agenda item is recognition of student athletes. Unfortunately, the MIAA student in the Hockamuck League student were unable to make it this evening, but the world-renowned Milford High School varsity girls cheerleaders were able to make it. So, Coach Johnson, you want to come up and bring the captains up? Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi there.
You're not a little nervous, are you? So, tell us about it. How was it?
You want to go first?
Um, well, our season was full of ups and downs. We had a rocky start. We, um, one of our captains tore ACL, so she was out. One of our other captains sprained her ankle. Another girl sprained her ankle. Another girl hurt her back. So, it was all discombobulated, but we pulled through with the end, obviously, and ended strong.
It was like a really stressful year, but this year was like really important to us seniors as a, there was 10 seniors of us, and we really, our goal this whole entire season, win states, win states. We like instilled it in everyone's heads from the beginning of tryouts. We were really excited about everything, at practice, we tried our hardest. And so, when it came to states, I feel like we were really ready and prepared, and it showed on the map.
Yeah. Because we, the last meeting, we discussed how the season started really slow for you due to all those injuries.
Yeah.
You know?
It's a little rough, but we got it going after that.
Well, I know Dr. Tremblay didn't want to do some of those moves because he was afraid of his ACL as well, you know, so...
ACL is least of my worries. It's, uh, it's really wow, amazing just to watch. We've seen the videos and things with you guys, and it's incredible.
It's, it's great. This year was the first time we've been co-ed in 13 years, so it was a nice addition to have Chevelle, who's an amazing athlete, and he brought a lot of tenacity to the team. So, it was, it was really great. And I'm hoping once we do names, everyone can come up so you can kind of get a glimpse at everybody, but it was really exciting to have a boy for the first time in a really long time, so.
Now, you made mention, how many, how many cheerleaders are there?
Twenty-five.
And 10 of them are seniors?
Ten seniors.
So, you're going to lose 10 of them.
Wow.
I know, I'm thinking rebuilding next year, so I'll go with my brain.
Are you going to go on to cheer after this as well, or you...
I think two of us are. One of them just got accepted to Penn State, and that's Rachel Smith, and she wants to cheer there. And I know Olivia does too.
Yep. Olivia Hickey, who's not here, is hoping to go down south. She's a, wants to go to Louisville or Kentucky or something like that, so waiting to see.
One of those small schools.
Yeah.
With that secondary basketball program. So, do you want to announce all the names, Coach?
I would love to. Can I have all of them come up?
You sure can.
And I have a list because I don't want to forget anybody, which I've done in the past. Guys, can everyone come up?
Just, Mr. Chairman, while they're pulling them up, I did have an opportunity, they had their banquet earlier this week. I had an opportunity to attend, and...
They put together a slideshow, which was about 25 minutes, and I don't remember which one of you did it.
Ari.
Oh, there we go.
Ari, you've done a awesome job.
With music and just photos and really, first off, nice job on the slideshow.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
She worked hard.
Lots and lots of pictures which would be, which were taken throughout the season, but it really kind of showed the teamwork that was really put together and, and really fighting through and just continuing on and, you know, you kept, you kept your, you kept your eye on the prize, which was winning states, and you guys were successful with it.
It's not the beginning that counts.
It's how you finish, right. Exactly. Certainly, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, we did have 10 seniors, but it certainly wouldn't, we wouldn't have been as successful without everybody, so everyone did a fantastic job. Oh, I need Ari's phone, I'm sorry. Okay, so, our seniors are Ariana DeMarco, Kelsey Godette, Olivia Hickey, Ani Derazonian, Gabby McGovern, Emily Dantonio, Lily Schmollenberger, Natalie Appleby, Julianne Lovejoy, and Rachel Smith. Juniors are Hannah Saboran, Angelina Oliva, Lauren Tomaso, Taylor Dubé, and Kristen Gerard. Sophomores, Kirsten Buddington-Davis, Gianna Lanzetta. Freshmen, Lucy Kincaid, Ari Cavino, Chevelle Feaster, Eva Gonzalez, Zoe Byrd, Haley Cleary, Kelsey Duest, and Caitlin O'Connor.
Very nice.
A team of 25.
Now, open it up to the members. Any member like to make a comment?
Certainly, they retire of honoring champions here when we come to this, we come to this room, so congratulations for working so hard and for earning what you've earned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yes, I mean, I mean, it's great. I mean, come by and look at that. I mean, that's beautiful, and it goes in the case, and it's great. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to have a high school publicized in such a really wonderful way, and we can only hope the Patriots overcome their injuries and successfully if you have, so congratulations to all of you, really.
I'm sure having those challenges during the year just made it much more rewarding to actually win it all. And Heather, is this, how many championships is this now?
Well, this is just, in my 14 years coaching, our second state championship, but we've run, we've won numerous Hockamuck League championships over 14 years.
Can I just jump in and say, some people go 30 years coaching and get none. Two and 14 is pretty good. We'll keep...
All right, I like that.
That's a pretty good ratio.
And it seems like...
You know, when I, when I first started coaching, I definitely set out for this. And when I first started coaching, tumbling was a huge thing in cheerleading, and out of a team of 20, I had two tumblers, and I have grown the program to competing 19 out of 20 that tumble. So, it's, it's a huge feat in the amount of time. And one that could do it, but she chose not to. Not going to mention names.
No, it's great. Yeah, it's a great group of girls, you know, obviously, strong character. I know that two or three of them have been in front of this committee in the past as well, presenting, so thank you for everything and great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. I know how much dedication and hard work it takes from all of you. I've spent the last few years getting to know the program very well. You should all be very proud of yourself. And Heather, you've just done amazing job with the program. And it couldn't happen without you as a coach and without all the dedication and the ability and, and everything from all of these athletes, so congratulations and we're proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple of gifts for you, but I just wanted to say that it's, it's things like this that make it, I'm very proud to sit on the school committee and have people like yourselves, young people like yourselves, who win these awards, you know, come before us, you know. It's, it's really great. So, it just speaks for the great things that go on in the Milford Public Schools every single day, and I say it over and over again, and here's a classic example of it. So, great job. Dr. Tremblay's been shopping again, so...
I heard you were getting us all cars. I mean...
Dr. McIntyre has that planned for July 2nd. I'm going to send you to Mark Shane's house.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Welcome. Great job.
We're going to have them tumble for you, but we got...
Can I share one quick story before we leave? Because I was fortunate enough to be in the stands, and I'm not a good spectator, I'm pretty loud. So, Milford was sixth maybe in the rotation, sixth or seventh, right?
Yeah, sixth overall, yep.
With about 30 other teams to go behind them. So, you, you could feel the, sort of the energy growing as the routine went further and further because they hit everything, and all people wearing red and white behind me, everybody's just praying. It's all quiet until boom, it's over. Our section explodes, so they come off the stage. I'm not sure where they went because I don't really go backstage, right? So, I'm, I'm fighting the crowd to get to them, but this is the, I don't think you ladies and you, or gentlemen, know this. As I'm getting there, girls are crying from other teams and guys are starting to get all, because I didn't even tell you this, as I'm walking, oh, did you see Milford's there throwing their stuff? Have you seen Milford? There's no way you can, you can win now. This is awesome. So, I mean, it was just, it's a neat story to remember that people gave up before they even got out there. This, this was the routine that I, of all routines, I've been 30, 31 years maybe, I, I just, I was floored, galactically impressed with the routine, so, good stuff. It was fun.
When you tell, we're always outside breathing.
Yeah, I had no clue.
Heather, Heather, if you would, just to, and I think, you know, for the benefit of those that are watching as well, and for the girls and for Chevelle as well, can you just, just talk about real quickly here, you guys were working on, working on a routine that you'd been working on throughout the season. How far in advance before this competition did you change up your routine?
Maybe the day before. I mean, we changed it up quite a bit due to injury and, you know, having people out and then having to replace people, so I would say the day before is not the day before that. Less than two days.
Wow.
They're amazing athletes, so not only are they incredible athletes, but they're incredible kids. They do a lot for not only their community, their school, and it's not just cheerleading that they are a part of. They do lots of different things, and they should be commended for that as well.
Well, thank you very much. We're very proud of you. Great show. Thank you. Next agenda item is the Milford High School liaison to the school committee.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. And your name is?
My name's Brianna Rondo. I'm a senior here at the high school and a member of student leadership, and tonight I'll be sharing with you guys a few events and faculty updates that have taken place at MHS. To begin, I'd like to commemorate some teachers that have been involved in some different planning for the state. Mrs. Casello is a member of the National Park Item Development Committee for Math that established the scoring rubrics, benchmark scores for each of the five baseline scores and performance levels for Algebra II and the Integrated Math III Park Tests. In addition, Mr. Cunningham is also a member of the National Park Item Development Committee for English, who wrote the test questions, made final decisions on written questions, approved the field testing, and performed editorial work on the field-tested questions. Mr. Cunningham has also been published, has published three articles on his work with Park and Common Core. Our art, one of our art teachers, Ms. Tebbets, has been named the Director of the Secondary Division for the Massachusetts Art Education Association. Her responsibilities are to promote art education advocacy, professional development, and policy. She will be involved in planning the annual state conference, Art All-State, and will be representing Massachusetts at the national conference. Yesterday, Ms. Almaine, the branch manager at Milford Federal Savings and Loans, presented a lesson to Ms. Shea's banking and investing classes. She presented an interactive computer-based lesson called Teach Children to Save, a program of the American Bankers Association. Ms. Almaine collaborates with Ms. Shea on six lessons each semester, covering a variety of topics on saving accounts, checking accounts, loans, personal budgeting, debit and credit accounts each semester. In addition, yesterday, the Science Olympiad was hosted here in the cafeteria, bringing multiple towns to join into the event. Some students that won some awards was Adrian Bryan and Mackenzie Hopkins won gold medals in Windpower, as well as Bridgette Mack and Kayla Hopkins, who won silver medals in the same division. Jovan Bryan and Ryan White placed first in Chem Lab for Milford, and Josh, Josh Winfuer and Thomas Dorval took third place in Air Trajectory Division. Overall, Milford impressed with all their science knowledge yesterday. Last week, the winter concert for band orchestra and the chorus ensembles was held in the MHS auditorium. Multiple pieces were performed by each group. The concert choir sang Jingle Bells Chorale, and audition groups sang Deck the Halls. Wind Ensemble performed an interesting piece named Evil or Elves. The final piece was a group piece performed by everyone called Old Lang Scene. During the event, 14 students were inducted into the Triumph Music National Honor Society by their fellow senior officers, President Maya Paterno and Vice President Lindsay Baron. In addition to all this, with the holidays coming around, student leadership is also participating in Adopt a Family for the holiday season, which includes each grade buying gifts for four families in need. The faculty and staff has also taken up a collection for students and families in need during the holiday season. To help out this fund, student leaders are donating to help the staff provide holiday help to families, and student leadership has also donated to a few families in the district who have recently suffered loss in their families. So, basically, this was just like, and all the, the high school and the faculty and staff and the students here are committed to providing the community with some holiday cheer this season, so that's it.
Very nice. You did all that in two weeks.
Yeah.
Match for the next lead.
Yeah. Any committee member? Joe?
I, I just think that it's great within, I mean, you presented for a couple of minutes, and then those few minutes you captured everything that's going on in this school, whether it's athletics, it's community service, it's performing arts, it's just so much going on here. It's just great to hear that, so.
Very.
Nice job.
Thank you.
That's amazing. Well, thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the Milford Public Schools Policy Revisions, and I'll turn it over to Joe.
All right. I guess we haven't talked about policies enough already. So, this will be pretty quick. You, you might recall, not the last meeting, but I think the meeting before then, we reviewed the Section B. There's a group of policies, Policy BBAA through Policy BGF, that we, we discussed, but we failed to vote on, so we just wanted to bring it to the committee's attention again. This was a group of policies that the, the policy subcommittee had reviewed and determined didn't require any changes. The policy language is still relevant and up to date, so nothing really needed to be done with those. But again, we, we didn't vote on it at the last time, so just wanted to open that up for discussion again, see if anyone had any questions or comments regarding that group of policies.
Any member? All right, so why don't you read it again, Joe, as far as what you want to put the motion into?
Yep, so the motion would be to accept File, should I list them all out individually?
Yeah.
File BBAA, School Committee Member Authority. File BBAB, Transaction of Business. File BBA/BBBB, School Committee Member Qualifications Oath of Office. File BCA, School Committee Member Ethics. BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting. BDB, Content, Contents of Minutes. BDB II, Required Signature Bills and Payrolls. BDD, School Committee Superintendent Relationship. BDFA-1, School Improvement Plan. BEDG-1, Release of Minutes. BGC, Policy Revision. BGD, School Committee Review of Regulations. And BGF, Suspension of Policies. Accept those policies as is with no changes.
Okay, Joe's made a motion. I'm going to have a second from Joe. All in favor? Okay, Joe.
All right, so then we had three policies that the committee had provided feedback on. So, the subcommittee incorporated that feedback, and you can see the red line versions in your packets. So, the first one, let me just pull that up here. The first policy is BDB, School Committee Officers. So, number four, you can see where we made the change. The chair's responsibility is to appoint members of the subcommittee, and that was the only change to that policy. Any comments or questions there? So, motion to accept that policy with, Policy BDB, School Committee Officers, with the suggested changes.
Second. Patrick, all in favor?
Great. And the next one sort of goes hand in hand with that policy. We also reviewed Policy BDE, Subcommittees of the School Committee, and we incorporated the feedback from the, the last school committee meeting as well. You can see that there, number one, we changed that to the subcommittee will be established through a majority vote of the school committee, that the school committee chair will appoint its members, and then the, the subcommittee will be provided with a list of its functions and duties by the school committee in conjunction with the superintendent of schools. Is there a motion?
I, I do have a comment on that one.
Sure, absolutely.
And I, I apologize, I, this, I don't recall contemplating this in our last meeting. I feel like number three states the subcommittee is going to be provided with its duties by the school committee and the superintendent of schools. Superintendent of Schools doesn't hand out duties to the school committee. I think something like informed by the superintendent of schools or something like that. I think that saying that it's in conjunction with the school committee is, is not, is not, I, I don't know, I don't think that it reflects...
Sorry, my iPad just died, so I'm asking to pull over the... Okay. So, instead of saying in conjunction with the superintendent, change that language to...
I mean, I think instead of, instead of in conjunction, I would say informed by the superintendent of schools, or I would just strike the superintendent of schools from it, because I feel like, you know, the, the superintendent of schools doesn't provide the school committee with duties. We provide him with duties.
Right. I mean, we usually seek guidance from the superintendent and the other, the rest of the administration, so maybe we just change that to inform.
I mean, if it's, if, if we change, if we move in conjunction with the superintendent of schools and, and revise that to informed by the superintendent of schools, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I don't know if I...
I would say, I, I think informed, I, I'll be honest with you, I, and I, and I realize it's semantics we're fighting over, not even fighting, we're talking about one word, but it's an important word. I would say supported by the superintendent of schools.
Supported.
I think would be, because I think that's really, I think that better illustrates really what the role is of the superintendent in this when it comes to subcommittees. It's supporting them, it's supporting with information, it's supporting with documentation, it's supporting with administrative support. It's, it's really more from a support perspective rather than in addition to or in conjunction with.
Or do we, do we even leave it salad regarding the superintendent? Just say a list of its functions and duties by the school committee? Because we, we would in turn, as a, just a best practice, refer to that.
Right, right. Yeah. I mean, I'm, if it's easy to just strike it, I certainly make the motion to accept it with that lang, with the superintendent language stricken. I, I have no problem, I have no problem with that. I just wanted to make sure it's clear, that's all.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion to strike the language. Second from Scott. All in favor?
And then we would have to vote to accept the policy with the revisions.
Okay, yeah, you could take that.
Yeah.
All right, perfect.
Can we make that vote today with the revisions?
Yeah, we, so I'll make a mo, so I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to accept that policy to include the revisions of number three, which would strike from the, which would strike from number three on there in conjunction with superintendent of schools, and make a motion to accept the new adjusted policy.
Second by Joe. All in favor? Okay.
All right. And then we had Policy BDEB, Special Committees, where we reviewed, we had reviewed this policy as well, and we made some, some changes here. You can see the red line version. If you'd like, I can read through the red line version. I'm sure you could do it on your own as well. Any comments or feedback on this one?
Yeah, just, so we really made this policy better reflect the same policies that we would use for establishing subcommittees, so special committees and subcommittees are really sort of using the same procedures and have the same types of duties. They're really using a lot more to this language than that, unless I'm mischaracterizing, I don't want to...
That's exactly the, that's what we did. We, if we carried this over, which is why we should probably strike the same thing in conjunction with superintendent of schools on this one as well. It's literally lifted it from the previous policy into this policy at the recommendation of the committee at the last meeting, so that's exactly right. So, we'd follow the same form.
So, we're going to need a motion to strike the language?
So, I would, I would, I would motion to accept the revised policy, striking language in number three after the word committee, so striking in conjunction with the superintendent of schools. So, to accept the policy, with the striking of that language in number three.
Any discussion? Second by Jen. All in favor? And we need to have a motion to...
Accept the revised policy?
I just, I did one.
He actually did it all.
Oh, you did one video?
Yep. Trickling.
I am trickling.
All right. And then we have a, a new policy for you, Walkers and Riders, and this is more of a formality. It, it is the first reading, but with the, with the transitions, closing Middle School East and moving eighth grade down to Stacy, and then moving fifth grade down to Woodland, we needed to adjust the Walkers and Riders policy as well. So, you'll see that reflected here, that's Item B, Students in Grades Six through Eight who reside within one half miles or, or more from the enrolled school, and then C, Students in Grade One through Four, I'm sorry, One through Five, who reside one mile or more from the enrolled school.
Can I ask a question on this one, please?
Yes.
Mr., so on this one, and I actually have gotten a fair amount of, over the years, certainly a fair amount of parent feedback on this one. I think it's, I appreciate that we're making the adjustment on it. I'd like to, as we get ready to add it in budget time and thinking about next year, I for one would like to probably take a pause on this one in passing this and look in the budget season for next year. Thinking about the increase in traffic in the town of Milford over the last, over the last several years, this policy's been in place, I think, since I was in grade one, where it was if you were under a mile. Traffic has certainly changed, patterns have certainly changed, and the way that the neighborhood schools have certainly changed. As I think about it right now, according to this policy, it is a potential that we could have a six-year-old walking in upwards, walking up to a mile across, in some cases, very busy streets and intersections, most of which do have crossing guards, but not all, and across busy roads. I would, for one, would not feel comfortable putting a six-year-old in this day and age walking out on the street to, up to a mile to get to school. So, it's something that I do get, we do get a lot of feedback from parents, and I, I'd certainly like to engage, have this be for further discussion as a result, as we get into budget season, to see what the feasibility is to potentially alter this policy, certainly for the grades one through, one through five, to being less than one, to being less than one mile, potentially even making it as, either if possible, based on budgetary restrictions, to have it follow the same lines as kindergarten, or if we would continue to bus these students, or we'd need to adjust from some of the elementary schools as well. I do see that there's a big difference between Brookside Memorial, where we've got kindergarten one and two, and then when we get into third grade, I, I still, these are very little children, our traffic patterns are very, very different than they were when this policy was originally crafted, and I think it's an important thing from a child's safety perspective. We're creating a policy for a reason. I realize that most of these students are, are in fact car riders, parents do in many cases do that, but it's not all. And in my opinion, even one six-year-old that's potentially walking up to a mile to get to school, I, I do not at this point feel comfortable with. So, I'd like to have a further discussion on that as we get into budget time.
Any other member? Are we okay with that? Would you like...
Yeah, I mean, I think we're less than a month away from our first budget meeting, so why don't we see how much it's going to cost?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. Yeah. So, Kathy, if I could ask, why don't you get with Lenny and have Lenny run some scenarios? Because what we did in this policy was just to make Three-Five consistent, grade five, but what I'm hearing tonight is that we want to look at maybe one mile, a half mile, a[1705.12] Cause what we did in this policy was just to make three-five consistent, grade five, but what I'm hearing tonight is that we wanna look at maybe, uh, one mile, a half mile, a sort of, not door-to-door, we'd only do that for kindergarten, but effectively a neighborhood stop. And maybe you have him cost that out for us before budget? Okay, if you just swap with Lenny on that, we'll get that for the committee.
Would having him look at that include looking at any kind of a, some kind of a fee schedule if someone opted in to a bus? If you lived too close to get a bus, but perhaps you could add a, some kind of an optional fee?
We could ask him for information on that as well.
I don't know how complicated that would be, but it might be another option.
Yeah, we can, most of the, they ask.
So at least to.
So Kevin opt in and people wanna, may not be eligible who wanna pay and, I don't know how that would work, but we'll certainly, Lenny can network with his.
I don't know. Yeah.
Colleague transportation coordinators and.
My other question related, if you're talking to Len, is how will, um, or will extended day change with, um, the transition? And will any students be staying at Woodland for extended day, or will that model stay the same?
Right now, the plan is to have the K through two stay at Brookside and have three-five at Woodland.
Okay.
And, uh, and, and continue them there, that, that would be the best way to work.
Okay.
For the students, so we can certainly have that discussion with him as well, we can have him come to a follow-up meeting if you'd like.
Well, I think similar to this, the sooner parents can get that information, you know, it's helpful for people too, so it, it, it does kind of all wrap together.
Yeah.
Obviously extended day doesn't go into the policy, but the topics are related.
Yeah, and going through the budget, we, we've gone through our initial round of budget meetings, and that was the discussion we had had with Lenny and with each of the school principals.
And I think that frankly, that would be a huge improvement to allow the Woodland kids to stay at their home school with other kids of their own, they're, they're a better peer group. I think it makes a lot of sense, so I think that would be great.
Yeah, that's the plan for now.
Yeah, it's good.
Kathy, you reached out to me today because Lenny wanted to be on in January for the transportation bit. Maybe we can do both, we can do that and he can, so if you could ask him to prepare the documentation that he would need for that night, and I'll give him a list from slot and enough time for him to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it'll be the first meeting in January.
Okay.
Alright. You're all set, Joe?
That's all the policies, yeah.
Alright, thank you very much. And the next agenda item, reported the assistant superintendent for business and human resources.
I have for the committee this evening, four wa- warrants for their approval. The first warrant is in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and forty-four cents.
And I have a motion from Joe, second from John, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion from Patrick, second by Scott, all in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred ten dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion from Jen, second from Joe, all in favor?
And the last warrant is in the, in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion from John, second from Scott, all in favor?
Uh, the committee also has the December financial statement. There are no concerns at this time within our, uh, fiscal status. However, I do have a request from, um, the Stacy principal, as well as, um, Mr. Tremblay, Dr. Tremblay, to do a budget transfer in the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars to purchase two sets of Chromebooks. One would be at the, um, Stacy School and one would be at the Middle School East School. So they're looking to transfer the, uh, sum from, um, AV Supplies at Stacy over to Building Technology and textbooks over to, uh, Technology at East. That does require a vote.
Jen, second from Scott, all in favor?
The committee also has a list of the appointments from our previous meeting, no vote is required. And I do have, uh, two out-of-state field trip requests that need to be approved. They are both going to the, uh, Marine Biology Center in, uh, North Kingston, Rhode Island, and they are both grade-two classes. And they will happen on, um, March sixteenth and March fifteenth.
Any discussion? And motion from Scott, second from John, all in favor?
And that's all I have, oh, and there are gifts.
We do have some gifts. So the first gift is, the donor is Alternatives Unlimited Incorporated and Affiliates. Uh, the name of the gift is Family Fun Day and the donation is one thousand, two hundred and forty. Motion from Scott, second from Joe, all in favor? And the next gift is, the donor is the Brookside Elementary's, uh, PTO. Uh, name of the gift is donation from the fundraiser, the amount is nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Huge.
Phenomenal, phenomenal.
It's huge.
Any discussion around it?
Oh, second.
Joe, do, do you know what the fundraiser was? How, how were they?
Comedy night.
Comedy night, that's fantastic.
That's just unbelievable.
Yeah, they did a real good job.
So I have a motion from Joe, second from Joe, all in favor? And we'll get letters out on these?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much, that is just great, great.
Just, I know we just did an out-of-state approval. The, I know historically we've had, um, trips into, uh, trips for some of the, our, our high school students that have gone overseas in the spring. Do we see, do, are those still plans that are in the works and conversations that are happening right now? Yeah, the plans for right now, in fact, we're seeing with Washington DC for our students, I assume you mean with, uh, what's happening in the world in terms of travel. So we had a, um, a meeting on Tuesday evening, I had a meeting with Connie Burns, John Constantino, and all the parents of middle school east, looking to send their children on the trip, just to get a pulse of the parents, with the, what's happening with travel. Right now, the, uh, all but, I think all but two have changed, the, just two stu- two students have opted out, as at this point. This is for Washington DC? Washington DC. Um, as far as other international travel, we're still planning to go forward, we have students arriving here in February from China. We're, you know, again, planning to send students back, um, in June. Uh, we did, uh, the Italy trip is still on as planned, and for France, we did ask that trip to be changed to Quebec instead. Uh, you have to make a decision, it was right around that time, and other than that, the interna- that's all we have left for international travel, and it's just us to do those trips. I, my, my, uh, the reason why I bring that up is just with regards to obviously, certainly a lot of, a lot of, a lot of instances that have been happening internationally right now. At the recommendation and guidance right now of the, of the US State Department, their actual recommendation is to limit or restrict international travel, especially for programs such as this. I, I would ask that we as a, as we as a committee, really give some discussion and thought to how we feel and suppo- and, and what our support looks like for that. It's certainly culturally a phenomenal thing, but safety is paramount. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, State Department's probably a pretty reliable source. Uh, if they're saying we probably shouldn't be doing it right now, I think it's something we really need to think long and hard about. And I know that, uh, I appreciate the fact that we did that, that you did the pulse check with the Washington DC trip. I appreciate the fact that there's also been the adjustment that's already been made to the France trip. I ask that we, ver- that we as a committee certainly, um, if we can add this on as a future agenda item with international travel right now, um, really put this on a future agenda item. And I realize I'm, I'm jumping ahead a little bit in the agenda, but that we really, um, put this on for a future conversation, cause I, I think it's an important thing when it, when it comes to our children. We're gonna have to address this probably tomorrow, uh, because if they're, in terms of. I got it. Yeah. So we'll. I understand. I'll reach out to the Foreign Language Department this evening. Okay.
Any other member?
Um, I, I know with DC, you, you guys are looking at a trip insurance, are you taking the same approach with these other trips?
Yeah, I, I, I haven't talked with them yet, um, I'll, you know, I'll reach out, the DC one was coming up, um, you know, trying to finalize that. We're at the point where we can do a full refund at this point without the trip insurance, so, but we have to commit by January or so, or first week of January. And that trip insurance is pretty low, it's seventeen dollars. Um, but it has to be declared an act of terrorism within thirty days in one of the cities on the itinerary. So the restrictions around that, that, um, that policy are, are fairly limited, but it would provide for a full reimbursement. And even without the trip insurance, um, most of the trip, uh, would allow for us to have reimbursement to families. But we, again, we had a meeting, a well-attended meeting with families that walked them through all of that. But again, the international piece, I'll, I'll find out where we are with that in terms of the re- the, uh, if we were to cancel, what kind of, could we get a refund on that if that was the case? And what alternative method, be locally instead? And, and I'm not saying one way or the other, I just, I think it's, as a committee, I think we, we owe it to the parents and to the students. Sure. That we, that we have a in-depth conversation on that. So we can add it to the next meeting in January, first day in January? Yeah. Okay.
Any other member? Next agenda item is, subcommittee updates, policy.
No other updates.
No other updates, wellness, we have not met, middle school east.
We are gonna do a presentation at the next, at the January meeting.
Okay.
For, uh, we've asked for agenda time on the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It can be the following meeting, it's not urgent.
Patrick, Woodland School?
So we met last night. The, the building, I'm pleased to say, is currently airtight. Um, we don't have all of the windows in, we're expecting one, we're shipment of windows next week, uh, they'll be installed. Uh, they have put up plastic over some of the window openings for which there are no windows, um, which allows them to do interior work. Obviously, the interior temperature of the building needs to be at a certain, uh, needs to be a certain level before they can install drywall and tile and things like that. All of the, uh, all of the units are up on the rooftop, so the, uh, the air control units are all up on the rooftop, they're installed, um, they are ready to go. Um, you know, we're still, we're still on track and, and under budget, so, uh, slightly under budget, but under budget. Uh, we're still intending on the building being substantially complete on July twenty-eighth, um, which has been our, our goal all along, so that, that hasn't changed. There are some sort of large boulders that people may see that are still on the property. The reason those boulders aren't being removed is because they may go into landscaping, so instead of being in a situation where we have to buy them all rock. We have so much rock that's available on that site, those are gonna hang around for a little while. Uh, so there are, there are some boulders near the, that north parking lot and also behind the building, they're gonna stay around for a while until the spring. Because when we take them out for cost considerations, we wanna, you know, get them all out at, at one time. So, I mean, everything is sort of moving along like clockwork, I don't wanna, I don't wanna jinx us right now, but, um, so far, everything is, is on plan and on budget.
It's impressive when you drive by it, especially at night when it's so loud.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah.
It really is, it's a beautiful building.
It's our Christmas present.
Joe?
Um, Mike, I know you, you've been talking to Aldo about potentially scheduling a, a tour for the school committee?
Yes. What is, uh, what's a good time for everybody if I can get a tour set up for the school committee? Day and time, what works easiest?
So probably like a weekend in order to do during daylight hours, or?
Yeah. Say probably Saturday, do like a Saturday?
Yeah, I mean.
Saturday like noon?
Can we do it on the day we're already meeting for budget? I don't know how long the tour would take, but we're already meeting together.
Well, that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
January ninth?
Yeah. January ninth, half, do it after the budget meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
I'm trying just to work quickly.
Yeah, right.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Aldo.
Okay.
Yeah. So if we, a budget meeting is supposed to go to one o'clock?
We have from now from nine to one, if we wrap up sooner than that, we can, we'll just see, uh, if they're on site there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're not, they're not working on weekends now, so we have the buildings to ourselves, you know, I mean, the lights are on, but it's heated, I mean, we just need keys. So I mean, it just shouldn't, that should be easy.
Yeah.
Good, good. Okay, thank you, Patrick. Next agenda item, technology task force?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we did meet, um, the subcommittee did meet, um, last Tuesday, um, we covered a number of topics. You know, I think this has been stated already, but the search process for the Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning has been defined. As has the job posting, has been defined. The technology implementation timeline is, uh, on schedule, that's the timeline that Dr. Tremblay put, put forth, uh, this summer, I believe. And everything is, you know, again, on schedule, which is, um, very encouraging. And there's been some discussion of, um, the organizational chart on technology. Uh, there's been some ideas put out there by some of the, um, the, uh, integration teachers, uh, along with the administration. And it's a work in progress and something that I think will, you know, come forward a little bit more during budget season. But it's, um, there's maybe some changes that, uh, the administration would like to make on that. Along with that, we have a meeting coming up, um, next week, tentatively to discuss the E-rate submission, which is ahead of schedule fortunately. And we're meeting with, you know, members of the subcommittee, uh, members of the, the school department, Jonathan Capici and, um, Dan Nelson. And the curricul- uh, again, the, um, technology integration teachers, so, um, we'll have more to report probably next meeting on that, given that we have the meeting tentatively for Tuesday the twenty-second.
And, and, and on the roll too, like, given before, we're, we're right up to date on what we're doing, according to what Bob had given us too, so. We're not falling behind, we're not slacking anything, we're caught up to right where we wanna be.
I've got a question.
Sure.
What kind of changes were you talking about in terms of the organizational, um, chart for the tech commi- tech, um, staff in general? Could you just elaborate on that a little bit?
I think, Dr. Tremblay, we'd better, better serve by answering that question.
Sure.
We're gonna go through this in detail at the budget meeting on January ninth.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but what's proposed is not different than what you've already seen, the Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
To kind of oversee the whole departments, we have that as a point person.
Okay.
And then in there are just technology integration teachers and so forth, but we'll go through all those details.
Okay.
Right now, it's still a work in progress.
Okay, great.
But we've been meeting on that as part of the technology task force.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a quick question on that. So you mentioned, obviously, some of the, some of the faculty and staff and, and, um, that's currently involved with, with technology. I know some of them are teaching classes at the same time as they're also obviously functioning as effective, as effective IT staff as well, and, and really working very closely with Worldban, um, as well. Is that part of that overview that you're looking at from a, from a hierarchy perspective of, alright, are we kinda, are we, what's the highest and best use of those resources? Is it, alright, having them be a teacher as well as trying, sort of pulling double duty, so to speak? Or is it, is there a greater need for more dedicated resources of, hey, we're either gonna have you teach a technology class, or we're gonna have you be functioned as a technology, um, employee, so to speak? And, and really be dedicated more to that, and I realize that they integrate.
There's only one instance of that that would be Dan's.
No, I know that, I, I knew that, so that's why I was asking the question, is, is there, is there that need, or is, I don't know, and I'm asking, is that something that's being reviewed as part of that hierarchy?
Yeah. We're looking at that, our, our concern is when we roll out, um, you know, effectively a one-to-one at Woodland School, to have a dedicated person at Woodland School to see that through, to make sure that we're not handing these out without the support we need. So that is, that is factored into the hierarchy.
Okay.
Uh, as a technology integration, not as a technician. In the case of the teacher who has sort of, wearing the second hat of doing techni- technician type work. It's really a function of his, of his teaching capacity, cause he runs the student tech team as a course. And so he oversees students who work throughout the district doing techni- you know, technician type work. But I think when we added the additional staff which is being proposed on there into the department, um, that will free Dan up to do, really focus more on the teaching element at the high school. So I think it's, it's, what's proposed, we'll speak to just the point you made.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other member?
Oh, I did have one more question.
Sure.
Uh, when are we thinking of actually posting the Director of Digital Literacy or whatever we're calling it?
We just wanted to go through, we wanted to go through the budget process on that first before we did that.
Tech Director. Okay.
And the reason my, and I, I can't speak for what Joe or John might, my, my thinking was on that, right now, we've made, you know, town meeting, we've moved it to one fifty-five A and one fifty-five B. And right now, it's pulling from that, and are we gonna continue to do that, or are we gonna do something different? And that's what I wanted to have a discussion with the committee about and see what, what to do next. But right now, we're ready to do it, we could do it at any point, we want to ensure the committee really talks it through together before we take any next steps.
Right. Okay, and the idea would be we post, I'm just thinking the earlier we post, the better luck we'll have for bringing the right person out for July first.
Absolutely. I mean, if the committee's on board with it, on, on January ninth, when we meet, the, the eleventh, that Monday, we're ready to go, the, the, the posting is drafted, everything's ready to go.
Yeah. Okay, great. That's great.
It's just I wanted to do it in the context of the budget development and not come out ahead of that and then say, oh, now what? We have to do, pay for this or fund this in a different way.
Right. Okay.
And I think it's important to have the budget discussion first.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Sure, but we're, we're a couple weeks away, a few weeks away.
Good.
That's the, is climate, culture, and morale, Joe?
So the, the committee met on, on Monday, we shared, um, I think we have about twenty more responses from the survey, so I think we're up around seventy, seventy-five total responses. We, we shared the responses with the individual school representatives on, on Monday night. They were gonna, at some point, they're gonna go back and schedule time with the principals of their individual schools to go down and, to sit down and, and talk through some of the, the results from the survey. They'll collaborate with the, with the individual principals, and then they'll come back at the next meeting in February, I believe. And at that point in time, we'll, we'll sit down and talk through some of the feedback that they were able to get from the, the principals, and we'll start to put together some action plans to address some of the issues. What our plan is, January's starting to fill up, but, um, hopefully our first meeting in January will share the survey results with the, the entire committee as well, so you can see what some of the, the topics are. As we mentioned before, uh, there, there are clearly themes that are merging, but I also don't wanna paint this picture that, that morale and culture is an issue across the district, because it's not. We, we do have a very strong culture, uh, and we do have good morale, there's always areas for improvement, and I think that's what we're finding as part of this process. You know, the feedback that we got from the committee this past week is that there's, um, there, there, there's a, a feeling that, um, there's clearly a focus on this now. And on things like behavioral issues, discipline, um, communicate, issues with communication. And so they appreciate the fact that this is now being focused on not only across the district, but at the individual school levels as well, so. Lot more to come.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the results of those surveys in, in, you know, before we, we come to the meeting. So obviously seventy surveys is, is a lot of surveys to read, I want the opportunity to read through those before we come in to actually discuss it. So if we could, if you could share those as soon as, as soon as it's practicable, so we have an opportunity to really review those, so we can see what some of that, that raw data is. I think that that's, that's important, I, I wanna read that.
Yeah.
That's no problem, I'll, we can have, I can actually have Melissa scan this in and we can email it out.
It's a, yeah, it's an open survey window, so we can see where we left off, and we, I get a few every day, or a couple every other day, and we can certainly add that. So what did you say, I'm, I'm sorry, I was talking with Mike, can you do a presentation with the committee on that, you, we're gonna do a presentation on that, or?
Yeah, it, yeah, I was thinking January sometime.
Okay. So I'll pull that up, um, if we do the second meeting in January, I'll pull that up a couple weeks in advance?
I, I'd like to see it as soon as possible, so just scan them and email them, that way we have an opportunity.
Okay, sure.
To read, I mean, seventy's a lot, I mean, we, that's a lot of teachers, so I, I'd like to see what they're saying.
Sure. Yeah, we can get that, I must have, we can get those out tomorrow, we can get you what we have as a.
Yeah, I just, you know, just to see that, that raw data, that'd be good.
Sure. Sure.
And were the seventy surveys only teachers, or was some of it admin?
It's, it's staff, all staff.
It could be, um, it could be teaching assistants, behavioral assistants, teachers, principals, cafeteria employees, students.
Okay.
Most drivers.
Okay. Good, great. Any other member?
Just a quick question, on the surveys, are they anonymous?
Yes.
They are, they, they had, they have the option to add their name if they wanted someone to follow up with them. Um, so a couple people did, but mostly anonymous.
Okay.
Okay. Next agenda item is school liaison updates, did anybody have a chance to get into their schools?
I did, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry, John.
Oh, thank you. Um, I mean, fortunately, we get the high school liaison student update, um, every meeting. Um, but in addition to that, I want to highlight some points, um, academically to begin with, that, uh, we have two students that are in the National Merit Scholarship Program. In addition to that, we have, uh, AP Scholars, um, AP Scholars with Honor, AP Scholars with Distinction, um, a total of probably in and around twenty, I didn't tally it up, but, um, and, and I don't wanna read their names now. I think it would be, uh, great if we could bring them in on a future, on a future meeting. Again, I know we're not at, um, future agenda items yet, but, um...
That's okay, what is it, John? What happened there?
Uh, I guess you call it, um, AP Scholars and National Merit Scholarship, Scholarship winners. Uh, and I have a, a few more points. Um, the high school, uh, the staff of the high school and the administration is preparing in April, um, uh, I don't know how you pronounce the na-, the acronym, but N A E, NIESC. Uh, we have our NIESC accreditation, um, which I believe is four days. It begins on Sunday, April third, where a team of, I think, sixteen evaluators come in, and they spend, they spend four days here evaluating, uh, all aspects of Milford High School, um, clearly. Uh, they're spelled out, I won't, I won't go through, uh, uh, I don't wanna say the boring details or the gory details. I won't go through the details at this point, but it's a, it's, it's a big event. Uh, it happens once every ten years, so, um, staff, facilities, uh, is all preparing for that. We... We also have, um, a hundred and fifty-five Milford High Schools seniors who qualify the, for the Stanley Z. Koplik Certificate of Mastery Awards. Um, they've qualified well enough in their MCAS scores. Um, there's a few more steps that they need to, to reach, but what that allows them to do is, um, to receive a tuition waiver to a Massachusetts State College or University for eight semesters, um, which again is a, is a, is a big achievement. Uh, there's more to it before they, they reach that final reward, but, um, very well worth noting, I think. And I just have an update on, um, college applications. Um, we've had eight hundred and twelve applications filed as of today. Um, and out of our two hundred and thirty-eight seniors, we have a hundred and thirty-one that are currently in AP classes, which, uh, again, is very impressive to me, so. That's my update.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Thanks, John.
Any questions from any members? No, nice job, John, thank you, thank you. Next agenda item is future agenda items.
Uh, I know we've, I, I know we've done, uh, we've done a couple already that we talked about, um, just ask that those get on there. Um, and then, uh, one of the other things I'd like to, um, probably take a look at as well, it's, it's something that's been brought up to me actually on a couple of different occasions over the last couple of weeks, is, um, if we could take a look, and again, this sort of goes as we start to get ready for budget time, um, and kind of do a, um, do an evaluation of our, of our, our, uh, our paraprofessionals and teaching assistants, um, kind of taking a look at a level set for where their salaries are right now. Um, getting some, a fair amount of feedback, we're starting to see, we've seen some turnover with some of our area towns, um, that are starting to grab some of our teaching assistants who are very, very talented. Um, but they're starting to, we're starting to see some migration out to other school districts. Um, and there, some of the differences in salary are very significant. I mean, it's this, we're not moving for a thousand, we're not talking about teaching assistants moving for a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. We're talking about them moving for fifteen and twenty thousand dollars difference, I mean, very significant differences. So I ask that we kind of, um, that we look at where, where they are. Um, I realize that's, that, that's collective bargaining agreement, um, but I, I think if, if we're, as we look at that, as we get into budget time, does it make sense to maybe even go back and say, hey, listen, can we, can we enter back into, um, if there's money and we, and we, we feel that we're out of line right now, we're potentially losing people as a result of it? Um, I'm, I'm certain that the collective bargaining agreement would probably not, they would probably not be, uh, uh, they would probably not walk away from the standpoint of us going back and reevaluating that and saying, hey, we'd like to, we'd like to revisit that. But I'd hate to, I'd hate to see us losing people, um, if it's, if it's surely a huge difference in salary, and if, is there a way that we can evaluate that? So I ask that be a, an agenda item, and certainly as part of your, um, and certainly as part of our budget conversations as well.
Sure. Any other member? Okay. Next agenda item is old business, anybody have any old business? Before adjournment, we do have an executive session, we will be going into executive session. We will not be coming back to open meeting, the meeting will be closed. So with that, can I have a motion for adjournment? Joe? Second from John, all in favor? Good night, Merry Christmas, and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.